Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City of Tuscaloosa zoning board of adjustments meeting. I'm going to go ahead and call it to order, March 27th, 2023, 5:00 PM. I'm Michelle Coley, I'm the vice chair, and we'll begin introducing the rest of the board to my right.
Joseph Eaton, Sr.
Paul Rollins, Jr.
Tam Gellum.
So the purpose of the zoning board of adjustments by virtue of the state law and city ordinances, the purpose of the ZBA is as follows: Here appeals from decisions of the zoning officer of the city, Grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the city council therein, Grant variances from the terms of the zoning code when owing to the special conditions, A literal enforcement of the code would result in unnecessary hardship. Now, no one factor determines what is an unnecessary hardship, but all relevant factors will, when taken together, must indicate that the plight of the property in question is unique and that it cannot be put reasonably to a conforming use because of the limitations imposed upon it by reason of its classification in a specified zone. At this time, I'm going to go back and introduce our city employees. From the Department of Urban Development, Emily Hayes, Neighborhood Resources Coordinator, Jonathan Bowen, Planner, Angie Terrell, Administrative Assistant in the back, From the Office of City Attorney, Kim King, Associate City Attorney, And from the Department of Infrastructure and Public Services, Mike Gartner, Associate City Engineer, And Kevin Jones, helping with the video production in the back. Now, working definition of unnecessary hardship is as follows: The property cannot be put to any reasonable use under its current zoning classifications; It must be unique and peculiar difficulty relating to the property of a serious and significant nature; It must relate to the property and not any personal issues; This includes economic, financial gain or loss; A variance may not be granted where the property owner merely suffers financial loss of a kind that is common to all of the property owners in the area; Circumstances that are not hardships, self-inflicted or self-created, Inconvenient, personal. Now, the Board of Adjustments does not have the authority to enact zoning laws or special exceptions, nor does the Board have authority to rule on claims of equal protection of the law or the fairness or unfairness of any zoning ordinance. The zoning board of adjustments by virtue of the state law and City of Tuscaloosa ordinance does not have the jurisdiction or authority to consider, interpret, and/or enforce any term or condition of subdivision covenants and/or homeowner association rules or regulations. Now, these matters are therefore not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Such covenants or regulations are between the private parties involved and not the ZBA. That having been said, any decision made by the ZBA on any particular case does not necessarily preclude the enforcement of such subdivision covenants and/or HOA rules or regulations by other lawful means. Now, this is a public hearing, and it's being recorded, videotaped, and is streaming live on the city's website, Facebook, as well as local cable TV. Now, proper decorum, civility, and respect for others is required at all times. There are signup sheets outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition, and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. When you are at the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and state your name and address for the record. All comments should be directed to the Board. No questions or comments are to be directed to city staff. I would ask city staff to confirm for the record that all the appropriate and required public and individual property owner notices for each case upon the docket of petitions now before the Board have been made in accordance with the law. It has. Now, the following procedure will be followed for each petition. This hearing is an opportunity for the petitioner to present their case, for the public to inquire and make their views known about the petition, and for the Board members to gather relevant facts before making its decision. City staff will introduce the petition and present facts and information to the Board concerning the same. The petitioner or petitioner's designated representative will be asked to make comments and answer questions from the Board. Now, the petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. The four members of the public that are in support of the petition for the, and the four members of the public that are in opposition to the petition who signed up to speak will then be afforded an opportunity to make inquiries and comments. Now, petition response. At the close of the public comments, the petitioner will be asked to respond to the comments if necessary. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. The Chair may then permit the public to respond, but only to the new issue raised by the petitioner in rebuttal. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the close of the public comment or once the Board is satisfied that it has received all relevant information on the petition, the Chair will close further comment or discussion, and the Board will then discuss the matter. Now, the Chair will read into the record the motion to approve the request along with any conditions set by the Board, and the Board members will commence voting. Four votes are required to approve any petition, not a simple majority of the Board. Leave signs in your yard, the staff will pick up the signs as soon as possible. Now, any party aggrieved by the final judgment or decision of such Board of zoning adjustments may within 15 days thereafter appeal therefrom to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. Now, the Board members have had a chance to review tonight's agenda items. Do any of the members have a conflict of interest with any of the cases on tonight's agenda? The following cases on the agenda have been withdrawn. ZBA 1123, one Forest Drive, and has been withdrawn. Do we need to vote on that? Okay. Now, we have a motion, we need to motion and second the approval of the minutes from October 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So October's approved. And then January 23, we need a motion and approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Approved. And February 23rd, need a motion and approval, second.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Approved. Now, report on the status of pending cases, Ms. King.
There is still only one pending case involving the zoning board of adjustments in Circuit Court. That is ZFNY versus the zoning board, CB 22-089. The status on that remains the same. We filed essentially a notice of neutrality that we were not taking a position on it in August, and there has been no further information from the court at this time in terms of when it may be set.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, are we ready to get started? Ms. Hayes, come forth.
Good evening, ZBA. So I want to give you all a brief update of our most recent framework meeting. So we discussed the first four, really the first three completely, and the fourth in part of our proposed zoning articles. The first is general provisions. So this article contains important provisions that pertain to all regulations. It includes sections that establish the title, date, purpose, and authority for the zoning ordinance, states the intent to ensure the development is in accordance with the goals, objectives, policies, strategies, and actions of plans adopted by the city. It clarifies potential conflicts between two ordinance regulations or between ordinance provisions in state and federal law. It adopts the city's zoning map and establishes the requirements for interpreting the map and rules for amending the map to classify newly annexed lands, as well as addresses the rules for the governing developments that have been, sorry, approved under these regulations. Sorry, that kind of got a little off. But this, this chart is going to be within our zoning map, our zoning ordinance, in which it describes the transition between our current zoning ordinance and our proposed district and our new zoning ordinance, just to make it a little bit easier to understand where we're going and where we're coming from. So the second article is definitions and rules of measurement. So in our current zoning ordinance, we have 216 definitions that are spread out between at least six of our articles. So we're going to combine all of those into one space. We're going to clarify those definitions that we have, make them more modern, make them more workable, make them easier to use. So this is just an example of what those definitions are going to look like, what that section is, is it has the term, as well as the definition applicable to the ordinance. And then going into the definitions for structures, definitions for land uses, and definitions for city regulations reviewing bodies and applications. For the rules of measurement, the purpose is to establish clear understanding of how measurements are calculated for regulations. So it has the definitions for these measurements and how to use them. This section does consolidate measurements that apply throughout the ordinance, including building height and terms relating to lots and district dimensional requirements. Some rules are new, some are carried forward from the current ordinance, and others are carried forward from provisions that apply only to the mixed use and mixed residential ordinances. Moving into administration, so the purpose of this is to consolidate all development review procedures and establish a procedures manual that includes a set of standard procedures that apply to all development applications. It also makes changes to the development review procedures. This article includes specific sections which correspond with the procedures manual, and those are as follows. So this is the table of development review, which just basically outlines exactly what steps you have to take based on the type of development. And then it goes into the application requirements and stating the purpose and applicability, the summary graphic review procedures and decision-making standards. This is just an example of that administrative adjustment that is now going to be added in there. And then partially discussing the fourth article, which is the residential districts. So we're going to discuss, and in Article 4, it does establish a summary of all districts, purpose, applicability, and specific requirements. The general purpose statements are provided for categories of districts, and specific purpose, intent, and requirements are defined for all zoning districts. This article also defines unique zoning such as overlay districts. So with the mixed residential one, this is carrying forward the R4 zoning district standards. It's used to accommodate a mix of single-family detached, two-family, three-family dwellings, townhouses, and small-scale multifamily developments as at a maximum of eight units per acre, and this is a medium-density residential environment. So here's an example of what that chart is going to look like. And then going into the mixed residential two. So the MR2 is consolidating our existing residential attached one and two. It does take some things from our current zoning ordinance and carries it over, but it does combine them, so it's a little bit easier to understand. So this is for a medium density as well, but it's 12 units per acre. Here's that. And then finally, our multifamily residential. So this is carrying forward and consolidating our RMF, residential multifamily one and two. It doesn't carry forward our RM3 and RM4, but the existing lands that are zoned for those will be carried into this. This is for primarily the multifamily developments, as well as it may include compatible public, civic, and institutional uses. And then the overlay district. So the historic buffer is something that exists today. It's going to ensure that the facades of new structures on lands adjacent to historic districts are compatible with the facades of the buildings in those historic districts. So the boundary is just established on the official zoning map, and any new historic buffer structure that is built is going to have to go before the planning commission. Our next meeting is going to be April 5th, and I highly encourage the Board to tune into this. It's to discuss sign and billboards, and I know that you all have been affected by this, and we're hoping that these new updates can kind of keep a few of those things from having to come to you all as much. So as was mentioned, ZBA 1123 has been withdrawn, so we'll move into the appeal of the zoning officer. ZBA 2023, Mark Booth is appealing the ruling of the zoning officer regarding a freestanding sign located at 1217 Greensboro Avenue, Zone BC, DROD, Council District 4. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. So the Drish House is just, or excuse me, the Jimson Bandograph is just south of this. And here is a picture from November of 2022. And then this was the most recent photo. It's just that, that pole that is there. The applicable regulation, Section 24-135, freestanding signs are not permitted in the BC zoning district, as well as Section 24-138, abandoned signs, in which it states, "In the event a signed structure which supported or supports an abandoned sign is inconsistent with any term contained in these regulations, then the signed structure must be removed by the owner of such structure or property." So this is a comment that is coming directly from our Codes and Development Services. Urban Development received a complaint about the overall condition of this property. CDS found several violations, including the abandoned sign pole. They mentioned the section of the code that I just went over and how this property is zoned BC, so therefore it is not in conformance with these regulations, and it must be removed. Do you all have any questions for staff?
It's pretty cut, it's just plain out says it has to be removed, and this is all over the city, anywhere that is an abandoned sign, it has to be removed.
Right.
Okay.
So the petitioner is here.
Okay. Mr. Booth?
Thank you, Ms. Hayes, for some of your definitions, because that really helps me. My name is Mark Booth, President of Rustic Investments, Inc., at 1217 Greensboro Avenue. On February 28th, 2006, my partner and I purchased that property from Metro Investing. At the time we purchased it, that pole was there. And by definition, it is a pole, it is not a sign. And I think if you'll look, if I'd like you to go ahead and look at your new.
Mr. Booth, if you would have addressed us and not the city.
If she could go ahead and look in the new stuff she just talked about, definitions, she gave me the definition of a sign. It's real simple. A sign is, bear with me, this. I asked a young lady in the audience what this was. She says it's a wet paint sign. She didn't say anything else, it was a wet paint sign. There is no sign on that pole. Now, it's been there for 17 years since I purchased it, and now it's just come about that the city wants it down. You know, I mean, really? It was down, the pole, the sign that was originally on it was a Travelodge motel sign that has been, was removed, and I don't know when, but numerous years before that, because it was no longer a Travelodge motel. So just to offer you a little information from what I've found, went through the Oxford Languages, "Sign, an object, object, quality, or event whose presence or occurrence indicates the probable presence or occurrence of something else." I walked in here to City Hall tonight, and I followed the signs all the way here. And on those signs, they were on, I don't know what you call those things, it was holding them up, but that thing holding it up is not a sign. So when Mr. Schneider sent me the first notice, he says, and I'll read to you, "Good morning, the sign pole, the sign pole at 1217 Greensboro Avenue is in violations, reference 12435, permitted and allowed signs." And it says, "Freestanding signs of the BC district are prohibited." That's what he said. So that's what I appealed. Subsequently, I got another email from Mr. Smith saying the ordinance was 120, excuse me, 24-138. Well, I'm appealing the zoning officials tonight. That's what I came here, the 124, the first one that Mr. Schneider gave. And I'm saying to you that it is a sign. And I'm going to show you. I ask if y'all can. I ask you if y'all can tell me where is that sign? Is there a sign?
You go back to the microphone so they can hear you, please. Thank you.
I mean, I hate to have to come up here and argue about something like this, so trivial. There's more important things going on in the city, like crime and other things, a lot of crime. But, you know, y'all brought me here, so I'm going to fight for my rights, because I think everybody that comes here deserves the right to have their voice heard. So can any of y'all tell me where y'all see a sign there?
So what we're.
Ms. Coley, I mean, I'm asking, I'm just asking, can y'all tell me where the sign is?
So according to the Code Development Services, they said that
Ma'am?
The abandoned sign pole is a part of the ordinance that they're talking, is the abandoned sign pole. That's a part of it, and it's all over the city.
Okay, ma'am, that's not the question I asked you. I'm just asking for, you know, some, some, you know, courtesy to answer a question. I'll also read you the definition of a pole from Oxford's Languages. "A long, slender, rounded piece of wood or metal typically used as one in place in the ground as a support for something." So the pole is a support for the sign. I mean, let's face it. The definition, I understand what y'all trying to say, but the definition doesn't, doesn't allow for it. And on top of that, that pole has been there with nothing on it for 17 years before the last change of the zoning ordinance. So that itself would make it grandfathered in, but I'm not calling, coming for a grandfathering clause tonight. I'm coming here to get the definition of pole and sign determined so y'all can see that the zoning officer was wrong.
Okay. So city, if you could address that for me, what the definition, based on what we're reading and what? Mr. Pons?
So you can see here clearly on the screen, "In the event a signed structure which supports or supported an abandoned sign is inconsistent and remains, it has to be removed by the owner of such structure or property." This gentleman here, Mr. Booth, had previously just stated that it's been there. Clearly, there was a sign on it. It clearly doesn't have a sign now, it's been abandoned. This was also part of a city sweep kind of for the property in relation to code and building violations and things of that nature. And this was one of the items that Planning and Zoning and our CDS crew had found as an issue. And so he's also addressing other issues.
So what do you say about his, what do you say about his, that it's been there for 17 years?
It's an abandoned sign, needs to be removed.
Okay.
That's our, that's the zoning officer's opinion on it.
Okay.
Sir, you can ask her.
You can address it.
A question.
Mr. Booth, you will address the Board, please. Thank you.
I'm here to appeal zoning 24-124, 134, what it is. This new one that y'all thrown at me was not what I've signed up as an appeal.
Now, you said you received two emails, right?
Yes, ma'am, after, after the fact, I mean, but I wasn't, it was not.
You have the two emails before you got here today?
I have possession of them right here.
And you got them before today, right? You got them before today?
Well, yeah, but that didn't give me any time. This is the first one from Mr. Smith, I mean, Mr. Snyder.
And when did you get the other one? Because this is February the 8th.
Right, and that's what I did. I'm appealing his route.
So what, when did you get this one?
That says, "I feel the zoning, that's the zoning officer." This does not say the zoning officer. This is Mr. Smith, it's just thrown in other ordinance in there. He didn't say. So my question is, I have a pole that now, sir, you're saying needs to be removed. But that's not what I was brought here for in the first place. It was that a sign was here. That's not me, that's your city employee, Mr. Schneider, did that. Now, they changed it, okay, that's fine. They should give me a little time to do some research on it, which I really hadn't had time. But if it's, if it's considered abandoned, it was abandoned 20-plus years ago, and the city is just now deciding they want it to come down? And again, I say, this is just, it's ridiculous. I mean, it's not hurting anybody, it's, there's no danger there, but let me show you something that is a danger. You'll see right there, there is a pole that was removed numerous years ago, prior to my purchasing of the property. Evidently, the city made the owner or somebody take it down. I don't know. I have no idea how it is. But if you'll notice that, what do you see? You see a piece of metal sticking out that far out of the ground, and that landowner hadn't done anything in 17, the 17 years I've owned the property. They hadn't removed it. It's been a, it's a dangerous situation, so I could step in it, trip in it. The bus stop is just right there by it. But guess who owns that piece of property? The City of Tuscaloosa. So, you know, I don't mind doing things, but I don't like to be called on carpet when saying I'm doing something wrong, city's doing something wrong. They're breaking, that may be not a law, but it's, it's, it's in the ground and it's a hazard. It's a real hazard.
Has it, have you ever complained about it?
Stop my job to complain about it.
Okay.
You know, I can't, if you'd like me to complain about everything's wrong with the city, I'll take a month and go find it. But I don't, you know, that's not what I do. I'm just saying is, all of a sudden, they want this pole taken down, but they're not worried about something that is a hazard, that somebody could get killed, cut themselves on it, get an infection. I mean, it's right there by the bus stop. So really? I mean, this is, you know, I'm not saying it's an attack on me, but it sure wasn't a Christmas present.
I understand. You have 25 seconds left. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
Well, just want everybody to know what a sign looks like. A pole is not a sign.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Is there anybody signed up to speak for or against this? If the city would give us the definition of the 1, Section 24-135 that he spoke about?
So the definition of an abandoned sign is "Any sign or sign structure identifying a previous use or activity that has not occupied the site for a period of greater than 90 days, does not maintain a current business license, or pertains to a time, event, or purpose which no longer applies and shall be deemed abandoned."
Any further questions from the Board? Okay, at this time, we'll begin Board comments. So I need to read, but Mark Booth is appealing the ruling of the zoning officer regarding a freestanding sign located at 1217 Greensboro Avenue, Zone BC, DROD. Beginning with Ms. Eaton?
Well, I mean, you know, I think all we can do is go by the section that the city has given us, and right here, Section 24-138, you know, states that "In the event a signed structure which supported or supports an abandoned sign is inconsistent with any terms contained in these regulations." So, I mean, even though I understand what Mr. Booth is saying, it's not a sign, but according to this section that we've been given, you know, it also includes signed structures with support, structures with support signs, so.
I agree with Brother Eaton. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory. Even Mr. Booth mentioned that at one time it was a sign that said Travelodge or something, he had to remove. So regardless if we call it a pole or a sign, whatever we would like to call it, we understand that it was a sign. The top was removed, the pole is still standing. It's all a part of the sign. But for clarity from the city, once we get ready to vote, how do we need to vote since we're going to be voting on the ruling of the officer?
I apologize, the question is, how do you need to vote?
How do we need to vote? Because if we're voting.
In terms of if you want to support the, the ruling of the officer.
So usually the way we do it is opening it up. So, usually, the way we do it is opening it up for board comment, and then we'll talk through it, and then the chair will say, "Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, the case as presented or with any conditions," and then going through and voting yes.
But in this case, are we upholding, we're in favor of-
Let's, hold on, sorry, because this is the opposite of what we normally do, right? So, that's, we need to come in and vote the opposite, right? If, if you want to approve, um, the opinion of the zoning director, then you would need to vote against the petition to overturn the-
It'll be a no vote if we-
It would be a no vote if that was what you wanted to do.
Okay.
Repeat that again, it's a no vote if what?
It's a no vote if you want to uphold what the zoning board officer stated. And a yes vote if you want to go with Mr. Booth.
Gotcha.
So, for me, um, I do understand Mr. Booth, when he states that it's been there for seventeen years and nothing has been done about it. But if it's illegal and an aban- abandoned sign, no matter how long it's been there, it's still, whether they came a year ago, ten years ago, it still would have been an abandoned sign. So, whenever the city gets around to it and says, "Hey, it's gotta come down," then it's gotta come down according to this. And so, um, it's just, it, it's pretty cut and dry here on this one.
And I would agree with my fellow board members. Listen to all the cases. We have to have a standard we go by, and the standards on this case are pretty cut and dry, so therefore, we have to follow this standard, so I would agree with my fellow board members.
I agree.
Okay, so, we'll make the motion that, um, Mr. Mark Booth is appealing the ruling of the zoning officer regarding a freestanding sign located at twelve seventeen Greensboro Avenue. So, beginning with, uh, Mr. Eaton, are you voting in favor or against?
No.
No.
No?
No.
So, that's a no. Our next case?
Okay, so, we're moving on to our first case of the night, ZB A oh one twenty-three. Uh, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at thirty-three oh eight University Boulevard East, Zone R one, Council District five. This was continued from the February meeting, so I have to read it as that because it's written on legal notice in that way. But Mr. Mize is the owner, and he's gonna be representing the petition tonight. So, here's an aerial view of that property as well as zoning, and a closer aerial view again. And y'all have seen these photos before, but some new photos that we have from Mr. Mize of first bedroom, second bedroom, three and four. The applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request. The house is four bedrooms and three bathrooms. No violations found or complaints received. They did have a bathroom addition recently. That's why it was continued from last month. They did get a final inspection, and they passed that as well as a CO. So, they are requesting for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends four vehicles and eight adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
Are there any of those short-term rentals in this area?
There aren't in this area as of now. Um, we did receive five letters in opposition, as well as a petition in opposition, with fifteen signatures, I believe. Do you have any additional questions? District is here in person.
Okay, so, petitioner can come up?
Hello, my name's Kramer Mize, thirty-three oh eight University Boulevard, Tuscaloosa three five four oh four. I just wanted to, um, pull out a couple of the points from the last meeting, just to say that we did have, what Emily stated. The building permit has been inspected, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, um, and approved, and we do have the CO. It's already been inspected by the short-term rental inspector as well, just to make sure there weren't any other issues we needed to address, and that was approved. Um, and we're applying as a four-bedroom. I understand the board has concerns about putting ten or more in a house, regardless of the size, and I understand that. And so, um, we're applying for it as a four-bedroom for eight adults. I also understand there was concerns about, um, parking in, in the back and, uh, the Eighth Street behind the house having additional traffic, which, uh, we're not gonna have parking in the back because it won't be necessary, uh, so there won't be additional traffic on Eighth Street behind the house.
Can you pull up the area?
So, where will you live, where do you live, Mr. Kramer?
I live in, uh, Northport, thirty-nine fifty-seven Delwood Street, Northport.
Okay, and so, Ms. Roberts will be managing the house for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Is this prob, will this probably be used strictly for short-term rentals?
Yes.
Do you have any previous experience, any other short-term rentals? Have you ever done that before?
Not short-term. We have four long-term rentals.
In Tuscaloosa area?
Yes, ma'am, in the county.
And with engineer, when looking at, can you pull up the picture where the parking is? You're saying all of the parking, the four vehicles, will be able to get in the front? So, the- So, we're saying four?
Yeah, I think, I think four is a reasonable number.
Four is reasonable, okay.
And we also made the pad large enough that you can actually back up and then go forward down the driveway so that you're not backing out onto University Boulevard.
Any other questions for him? All right, thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Mr. Michael Cornwell signed up for opposition. Would like to speak?
My name is Michael Cornwell. I live at thirty-three oh four University Boulevard East, which is the house on the west side of thirty-three oh eight. In fact, it's like fifty feet away. I've lived there for twenty-six years. Our neighborhood and four individuals from our neighborhood submitted six individual letters in opposition. I know the board previously looked at those, and I understood the staff would submit them to you again. So, I'm not gonna read those or go much into those. I will touch on, sort of, a summary of our opposition and why we oppose this short-term rental. Here tonight is Ray Baloo and his wife. He owns thirty-three twenty-eight, which is on the east side of thirty-three oh eight. Denise Wolf, she lives two doors down from me. Delane Smith, she lives across on the other side of Eighth Street. And for clarification, some of the addresses will show up as Eighth Street, and some of them show up as University Boulevard. The reason for that is unknown to us. All the houses on the north side of Eighth Street, of Eighth Street addresses, those of us on the, the high bank side on University Boulevard side, we have University Boulevard addresses. This is the third hearing on this petition, and I want to speak to why we've had three hearings. I touched on this last week. The petition in this case was filed December twenty-eighth by Ms. Roberts. It said at that time, December twenty-eighth, there were six bedrooms, three baths, a thirty-by-thirty-foot parking pad, all that parking in the rear. None of that existed at that time. The first hearing, there was an issue about permits. I, I couldn't exactly understand it. Some confusion about permits. Maybe the confusion was, if you submit on December twenty-eighth, petition at stage, you've got six bedrooms, three baths, and parking pad.
Sir, sir. We need you at the microphone, because it's being recorded.
I'm, uh, I have a habit of that-
I understand.
-profession.
Right.
And, and why that's important is the board relies on this information to make decisions. And these are special exceptions. They're not ordinary exceptions, routine exceptions, automatic exceptions. And, and exception is not the standard. It's something different. So, what the petitioner is asking to do, and the owner is, come into our neighborhood and disrupt it by having a short-term rental, and we all know what's gonna happen there. It's gonna be a party house. It's gonna be the game day weekend. There's gonna be drinking, carousing for three days over there at least. And I'm not against drinking, but I don't want to be kept awake at night. That cuts from the driveway, and talking about topography is one of discretionary things. That cuts from the driveway that goes through the high bank. My house and their house sits up about twelve or fifteen feet above University Boulevard, and the drive cuts through. So, you don't see University Boulevard traffic until you're right at the edge of it. There's some question last meeting, when we talked about the original configuration of the house. There was two bedrooms, two baths, barely two thousand square feet. It has the same square feet now as it did then. There's been no addition to the square footage of the house. And a question about the permits and who is responsible, and the significance of permits. The short-term rental website, on the city's website, on the first page, it's got four different ordinance sections. It says this in bold letters, "Where building upgrades are found to be required, a building permit must be obtained from the Office of Urban Development, Building, and Inspection." We got the two additional bedrooms down there. No permits for those.
Sir, you got about ten seconds, the last comment you want to make.
It went so quickly. Well, let me just start, say one thing, and I'm looking at the new amended short-term rental, uh, ordinance that was passed by the city. And there's this-
I'm sorry, we do have to stop. It's a hard stop at five minutes. I do-
Maybe I can come back.
And that's for everyone. These times are hard. We do have to stop, and you're limited to that time, okay? Thank you for, I said, that's for everybody. That is gonna be hard stop. Thank you so much for your comments. Are there anybo, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against? Any other comments? Okay?
She does.
Yes, ma'am, you can, yes, ma'am, please, and state your name and address.
I'm Denise Wolf, and I live at thirty-two thirty University Boulevard East, but you actually access my home from Eighth Street East. My question is about the number of people that are going to be allowed to stay in this house. Um, we're looking at eight adults, but I believe, um, the petitioner just had a conversation with a neighbor recently, saying that he had wanted to put ten people in the house. So, are we gonna put an adult in each bunk bed? Is that what's gonna happen here? Because there's one bedroom that has bunk beds. So, are we looking at eight adults and two children for a total of ten people? That's, that's all I, all my question was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Anyone else have any comments for or against? Okay, we'll close public comments. I'll go to the board for comments. Ms. Eaton?
City staff, on that, uh, on the petition, how many signatures on that petition, do you know?
Fifteen.
Um, now, all these short-term rentals are, are usually pretty tough, um, when, when, especially, when it's our discretion to determine, as it states under discretionary, to look at the characteristics of a neighborhood. So, that's always a tough one to me, uh, you know, who, who determines the characteristics of a neighborhood? So, a, again, I'm gonna pass along my other board members. I really don't know which way I'm gonna go on this one, but, uh, that's always a tough one for me.
This is a, um, petition that we've been looking at for the last two months, maybe. Um, initially, when it was, I think it was supposed to be six bedrooms and two baths or four baths, how many bathrooms? But the, my main sticking point was the number of bedrooms. I couldn't see that many bedrooms being inside of a house of this size. I'm glad that the petitioner actually provided some photos, uh, on today. It's showing the actual number of bedrooms that are inside of the house, and it is only four bedrooms as opposed to the six. Uh, the only issue I'm looking at now is, um, going back out onto University Boulevard. That can be an issue, but at the same time, if I look up and say, "Okay, well, let's vote this down," and the petitioner turns it over and just decides to do a long-term rental, then you will have someone staying in that house for three hundred and sixty-five days, still going out the same driveway, uh, onto University Boulevard. And, um, with that being said, as of right now, I, I would say that I'm in favor of it. Again, with these short-term rentals with the new STR, it's only for a year. I know there are concerns from the neighborhood that says, um, maybe a party house or a lot of individuals in and out. But that's a part of this one-year probationary period where, if there are any issues, again, use three-one-one and put it on record. And when it's time for the petitioner to come back for renewal, at that point in time, if there's any issues, at that point in time, if we voted down, and he can't renew. But I'm in favor.
So, originally, when this petition came up, my concerns were, um, the way it was being presented, and the way I felt like the information was being withheld from us, and I felt like it was being presented in a way that made it seem like something other than what was happening, was going on. And so, with the petitioner coming himself to present this to us, he did answer the questions that we had, because we didn't understand how it went from two bedrooms to six bedrooms. We didn't understand about the petitions and the bathrooms and all of that. Everything just seemed so in the air. Um, you know, I always tell everybody that the city council has said that short-term rental can happen all over, all over the city. And, you know, nobody wants it in their neighborhood. Every time we see, nobody wants it in their neighborhood, but yet, people keep coming before us. Um, you know, your remedy to this, if we do approve it or not approve, is three-one-one. It's to report if it's a party house. It's not meant to be a party house. It's meant to be short-term rental, where people come in for game day, for graduation, for anything that they want to come into town for and rent it. Um, it's thirty days, thirty nights, and thirty days, so it's not a lot of days. It's three hundred and sixty-five days. It could be rented out, but only thirty days can be short-term rental, so it's not as much as, um, you know, it's really seven weekends that we're talking about, probably. Um, so, the questions that I had have been answered to my, says, one thing for the city. The petition, the, um, to be able to do the work, permits to do the work, did they apply for all permits? Everything is in order like it should have been?
So, they did apply for the bathroom additions.
Was there any work to the bedrooms?
Per the owner, and if y'all wanted to have him come back up and speak on it himself, he said that they bought the house in that way. They did not add any walls. They didn't add any closets or anything like that. The walls were already there. The doors were already there.
So, it was just, um, Mr. Mize, if you'll come back up, it was just cosmetic work that perhaps was done?
Yes, ma'am. The, uh, cosmetic, there's no, uh, no walls added or anything like that. None of that was necessary, except for the bathroom, which was permitted. And it was mirrored off the back of another bathroom, so, right there, and easy to connect and hook it up and all that.
Okay, any other questions?
The rooms that don't have windows, the beds have been removed, are those, from those rooms?
No, but they are not counted as bedrooms. We're not counting them that way. They still function as closet space as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for him? Thank you. Mr. Gilliam?
So, uh-
Is it some new information that you're asking a question about?
For the past weeks, there've been three vehicles over there with Texas plates, and there've been gentlemen over there spending every night. I just want to know what they're doing over there. There, there's no lease with them. There's no short-term rental, granted, but they're, it's a team of me spending the night over. They grill out back. They leave in the daytime, I guess, to go to work. Great crew cab truck, been over there for over a week.
So, you're saying some people have been staying in the house? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mize, if you'll address that for us?
Yes, ma'am. It's currently being rented as a long-term for a forty-four day lease.
For how long?
Forty-four days.
Forty, is that long-term, forty-four days?
More than thirty.
Okay, thank you.
The petitioner did clear up a lot of questions we had from last month's presentation. The short-term rentals are very tough, and for us as the board, which ones are approved, which ones are not. I am happy that he's brought it down to eight adults and four vehicles, but this time I'm not sure how we're going to vote, so.
I don't have any other comments. Okay, so at this time, we'll make a motion that Bama B&amp;B petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term. That's the name of the business. Thank you. Bama B&amp;B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 3308 University Boulevard, Zone R1, Council District 5. With these stipulations, eight adults, four vehicles, 30 nights, for one year. Voting with Mr. Eatonman?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion failed, so the petitioner will not be able to have a short-term rental in that house. Thank you. Next petition? I'm sorry, it's done.
I'll give everybody a second. Move out. Okay, so we'll move on to ZBA 2223. Amerco Real Estate Company petitions for a variance from the industrial district setback regulations to construct a storage facility on the property located west of 6500 Interstate Parkway, Zone ML, Council District 6. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view. This is right off Buttermilk Road, right behind the Tuscaloosa Chevrolet. Here's just a view of that vacant lot as it sits today. Applicable regulations, this does come from our industrial district section. Section 2474 yardage height requirements, the minimum side yard width. Abutting a business district, it does require for ML industrial districts to have a minimum side yard that is 10 feet plus one foot for every foot by which the height of the building exceeds 15 feet. Petitioner is requesting this variance to construct a storage facility for U-Haul. The property to the east was recently rezoned from ML to BH, which triggered the setback regulation and increased the required setbacks from 10 feet when they purchased this property to 35 feet, which is the 10 feet plus one foot by every foot the height of the building exceeds 15, and they are proposing a 40-foot tall building. Due to the size of the building, the drive aisle would be significantly reduced in order to meet the required setback, as well as the topography itself does cause a hardship. This is the proposed site plan. I'll zoom in so you can see it a little bit better. So right there is where that proposed 15-foot setback is going to be. And I can't circle it, y'all can see it right there. And you can see, if you shifted the building to the west a little bit to have to meet that 35-foot setback, it would reduce that drive aisle significantly. Do y'all have any questions for staff?
Who's the property owner to the, this would be the?
To the east?
Yes.
That's Tuscaloosa Chevrolet. They just recently rezoned that little portion, that's what is causing this, to expand their operations.
Any opposition at all from them?
No opposition.
The setback on the other side is also 15 feet?
So on, uh, there?
On the other side of the, yeah, to the, I guess to the west.
To the west? So as of now, there's not anything being built there, but it would be 15 feet. Do you have any additional questions? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Luke Pate with Duncan Coker Associates, 302 Merchant's Walk, Suite 250, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 354 is it? I'd like to also point out another constraint on this, on shifting it to the west. There's an existing sewer line that crosses the site, and you can see they're dashed in. We're right on the edge of that easement with the building placement now, so that's, that's another constraint keeping us from ship, being able to make that setback. I can answer any questions you may have for us.
Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody here that opposes or in favor of this petition? Okay, we'll go to board comments, starting with Mr. Eatonman.
I don't see any problems with it. I think it fits the bill for a special exception, so I don't have a problem with it.
I agree with my board member, I'm in favor, I do see the hardship.
I agree as well, I do see the hardship for the variance. No control of the property being rezoned to the east and so, to the, of them, so there's no way you can do it, and the sewer line, the topography, all of that makes this the best use of this land, so I do agree.
I would agree with my fellow board members.
I agree, I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, so I'll make the motion. Amerco Real Estate Company petitions for a variance for the industrial district setback regulations to construct a storage facility on the property located west of 6500 Interstate Parkway, Zone ML. Voting with Ms. Eatonman?
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Approved?
Okay, so we'll move on to our next case, DBA 2323. CenterPoint Integrated Solutions for CarMax Auto Superstores, Inc., Kristen Cowan, petitions for a special exception to allow a temporary modular office on the property located at 3427 Skyline Boulevard East, Zone BH, Council District 6. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning, and then a closer aerial view of that property. And here's a view of that modular office. The applicable regulations, Section 2491, special exceptions, temporary mobile or modular office in commercial and industrial sites. So the primary criteria is the applicant should demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that there's a serious practical reason or for the use of this modular unit. Discretionary criteria, whenever possible, a timeline should be put on when this unit is going to be removed, and at the expiration of that, it should be promptly removed. It should also blend with nearby structures. So the petitioner is requesting for a special exception to use an existing modular office. Modular office is approximately 1,700 square feet. CarMax is currently under contract to purchase this property, and they expect to close on the property in September of this year. Per the petitioner, they are on track to apply for an LDP, Land Development Permit, this month, as well as a commercial building permit by August. CarMax plans to utilize the modular office to hold dealer-only auction events that are closed to the general public. So just some history of this modular office. It has been there since June of 2011, when it was originally approved for Mr. Tori Cochran to allow it to be there for a certain amount of time. Three additional requests were made to the zoning board of adjustment to extend this time in which this modular office was there. Two were approved, while the third was denied. Mr. Cochran did appeal to the Circuit Court, and the city did make a settlement. Part of this settlement was allowing Mr. Cochran to keep this modular office there until November of this year, but there were restrictions on the fact that Mr. Cochran or any of his representatives could not request for additional special exceptions to keep it. So the petitioner does have a presentation for y'all. Do you have any questions for staff?
Do they plan to remove the modular office once their construction is complete?
They do.
Do they, what's the duration they expect for total construction?
I'll let them speak on that. Do you have any additional questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. The petitioner can come forth?
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Brian Pulsofer. I'm with CarMax's Design and Development Team out of Richmond, Virginia. Our address is 12-800 Tucko Creek Parkway, Richmond, Virginia, 23238. We're excited to be here tonight. We've been looking in the Tuscaloosa region for many years and have come across this property, and we're under contract, like the staff said. And just to give a little bit of overview about CarMax, if you're unfamiliar, we're the nation's largest retailer of used vehicles. We have over 230 locations nationwide, and you as a, as a retail customer can go online right now, and you have over 45,000 vehicles online. Those are all at your disposal. So we're excited about this opportunity to be in the Tuscaloosa area, and also Kristen on our team is going to explain a little bit more about the details of the special exception.
Thanks, Brian. My name is Kristen Cowan with CenterPoint Integrated Solutions. We're CarMax's national development partner, and I'm here to speak about why we're here for this proposed special exception for the short-term use of this temporary modular office. So as Brian spoke, here's some of the stats about CarMax. We are, again, seeking the short-term operation of this existing modular building. So a little bit of history, we met with city staff here in late 2022 to discuss the permanent redevelopment of the facility into a retail and auction facility. We think it's a great, a great site and a great redevelopment of that property. This is what the eventual site would look like conceptually. So there would be sales in the front, along Skyland Boulevard, and auction in the rear. So the front would be sales display and rear would be auction staging. This is just a rendering of what the building would look like, and again, the existing modular building. So we've already submitted for a preliminary site plan review in order to have, have comments prior to submitting for the LDP submittal. We've also submitted for our ALDOT permits, which are about a six-month turnaround. So the duration of the short-term rent, of the short-term office building would be only for a year, we're expecting. So if we're approved for the special exception, we would have until March of 2024, and we are looking at beginning construction within the first quarter of 2024. We'll be working on securing all of our permits from both the city and the state, as well as the ALDOT here in the next few months. And that's the duration of my presentation. Let me know what questions you have.
So you're planning on operating the auction up until the time, this time next year, when you start building?
Yeah, so what, what this modular building will do is bridge the gap for us. So what we can do is, once we close, we can start staffing up our auction operations. And then, once our permanent construction starts, we would then build our permanent auction building and storage area, which is in the rear of the site. So the modular building right now is more toward the frontage road. And so we would build the permanent auction building with parking and storage, move our operations from the modular building to the new auction location, and then we could build our retail store location in the front. We would swap locations.
Oh, so while you're in the, the modular building, you'll be working on the au, the auction building, and then switch out?
We would like to, yeah.
Okay.
Then there's a seamless transition. So, you know, once we have staff on board, we would, we would like to have them, you know, stay here and then move right into the building versus having to, you know, look at other means.
Any other questions?
Have you already acquired this property, or is the acquisition pending? I will vote today. Have you already acquired this property?
We're under contract.
Okay, you're under contract, so, and you're confident that with, within 12 months, you will have both buildings built?
So we're going to start construction in the first quarter of next year, and that would be on the back half of the site, which would be the auction building. So we would like to, we'd like to extend this, this special exception as, as long as necessary, so that there's not a gap between, you know, losing the modular building and then having to come in with staff into the new auction building. So we'd like to extend it as long as possible. I believe it's a year window, so we'd like to start with that. Our intent is to not delay this at all. We would like to get up and running as soon as possible, which is obviously the reason for the need of the modular building. So if we started construction in the first quarter, it would, I would say, a six-month window to get the first half of the site completed. So, you know, we, we can talk about, I think there's a few months maybe unaccounted for. It was just a year from today. So I'd like, you know, if we need to explore other options or further discuss, we can.
Do you have a estimated time on when you're going to close on the property? I mean.
We're going to close in September this year.
September.
So will you, so will you be, I think I'm kind of misunderstanding here. So you're going to be renting the property now. If we approve this, when will you actually start operating the modular building?
When we close.
In September? So city, can we approve this far in advance?
Yeah, that's, that's the estimated closing.
You, you can approve this far in advance?
So would the clock start ticking now, or would it start in September for them? Because see, if we do it now, then it'll be March, this time it'll run out, right?
I think you could do it as a condition in saying that, that, like, the condition is the time period from September to March, Odo?
Correct. You can do it a conditional approval. You can set the time period.
Because what, what I'm understanding them say is that you're closing in September of 2023, but you won't start actually building until March, first quarter of 2024, and then it'll take six months from that time period.
Correct. Again, this is the preliminary timelines right now.
Sure.
You know, approvals, entitlements permitting for our long-term solution.
So this could even extend further out?
We would not like it to.
So in, in putting that together, a motion, what would that look like? This is.
So theoretically, you only have to set the time for which it has to be removed. So if you approved it today, it'll be approved and it just has to be removed by said date that you say it has to be removed.
So we can set a time out that, hey, from now until the summer of 2024, it's got to be removed?
Because essentially, if nothing happens tonight, it has to be removed by November of this year, so.
So there, so basically, you all have to take ownership of it before November 23rd, or it has to be removed if the other owner still owns it. If you don't own it by November 23rd, it will have to be removed. And so, okay.
That's our understanding.
So that'll be the stipulation? Okay.
So I guess my question would be, if we approve it, and, you know, I know you're saying you're pretty confident you're going to close on it, but they don't close on it. Are we extending the amount of time, we're not extending the amount of time?
It can't be extended for Mr. Cochran at all.
Okay, so we're only approving this to extend it for them? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Does the modular office have to be removed in order to start construction on the second phase?
No. Oh, for the second phase of our final, yes, it would have to be removed. So, so once, yeah, that we would come into the modular building, then we would start to build our auction in the rear. We would move the operation to the rear, and then we would start, you know, demo the modular building or move it, and then start construction on the store building in the front.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here for or against this petition? Okay, city, once again, let's get some clarity on this one. So what we're thinking is 18 months, we should push it out 18 months. So that would put us at April, May, June, so September, if we could push it out to September of 2024?
So you could just say, if you were approving it, on the condition that it must be removed by September of 2024?
And that it cannot be in the possession of Mr. Cochran on November 23rd? They have to close on it? It has to be in CarMax's possession?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll start with board comments, Mr. Eatonman?
I mean, I'm in favor for it, as long as they close on it and they take possession of it before November.
I agree, I'm in favor as well.
I agree with my fellow board members.
I agree as well.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll read the motion. CenterPoint Integrated Solutions for CarMax Auto Superstores, Inc., Kristen Cowan, petitions for a special exception to allow a temporary modular office on the property located at 3427 Skyline Boulevard East, with the condition that it is approved till September 2024, and cannot be in the possession of Mr. Tori Cochran on November 23rd, November 2023. Is that?
Need to put a specific date in September.
September, what, 30th? Is it 30, yeah, September 30th, 2024? September 30th, 2024. You have to have it removed or either come back, have to come back before us for something. And Mr. Cochran cannot be in possession of it as of November. What, is there a day, specific day on, in November that he has to be? Was it a specific day?
I don't know off, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head either.
Okay, so we'll just say November 2023 for that he can't be in. So let me read that again. CenterPoint Integrated Solutions for CarMax Auto Superstores Incorporated, Kristen Cowan, petitions for a special exception to allow temporary modular office on the property located at 3427 Skyland Boulevard East, Zone BH, with the condition that the modular must be removed by September 30th, 2024 and cannot be in the possession of Tori Cochran on November 2023. Starting with Mr. Eatman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion is approved. I like doing that.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case. ZBA 2423, Margaret Peacock, petitions for a variance from the residential district regulations to construct an addition on the property located at 1905 8th Street, Zone R3H, Council District 4. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view, so this is right downtown. Here's a view of the house. And this is just kind of a view so you can see where it's going to go in the rear. And then here is that deck that is going to be removed and where those additions are going to go in its place. Applicable Regulation Section 24-36, ground coverage ratio. So in the R3 zoning district, you can't exceed 35% ground coverage. Fisher is requesting a variance from the ground coverage ratio regulations to construct an addition on the rear of the existing home. The existing deck will be removed, as I mentioned, to allow for the construction of a sun mudroom as well as the expansion of the existing kitchen. The corners of the addition will be at least five feet from the southern property line so they don't have to ask for a variance from the setback regulations. Per the petitioner, the ground coverage is approximately 33, a little over 3,300 square feet. With the additions, the ground coverage would be a little over 3,700 square feet. So the maximum ground coverage ratio for this district is right around 3,600. So it would be exceeding that. The project also requires approval from the HPC and that will be heard at the April 12 meeting. So here is the current survey with that deck that is existing. And here is the existing floor plan with that proposed floor plan. And I'm going to zoom in on this next slide so y'all can see exactly where this is going, what's happening here. And this is just highlighting the fact that it is going to be five feet from the property line. So there isn't going to be any fire rating or anything like that required. And this is just the mock-up so y'all can see the elevations of it, just so you can get a visual. But this is something that the HPC is going to have to look at and approve. Do you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions. The petitioner is here.
Hi, my name is Margaret Peacock. I live at 1905 8th Street. The house was built in 1897. At the time that it was built, the kitchen was actually outside. There wasn't an indoor kitchen back then. It had a chimney, it was all outside. Somewhere, we think at the turn of the 20th century, they took what was the porch and just built a kitchen on top of it. And there was, it was, you know, porches are built at a slope. And so the kitchen was actually built on a slope with insufficient foundation underneath it. It was the kind of foundation you would build to hold up a porch, not a kitchen. And I assume over the last, you know, 100-plus years, the kitchen just is sinking. I uploaded a lot of pictures to share with you guys just to sort of, with a level showing the fact that the kitchen is sinking. So that is a clear problem. When we bought the house, it had a lot of major foundational, you know, problems that needed attention right off the bat. And this is certainly the last major problem with the house. The deck itself is disintegrating. At some point in, I think, the 1980s, someone decided to build a pantry on the side of the kitchen. The pantry actually blocks a window in the pre-existing, like the 19th century house. So when you look out the window from the dining room, you see the wall of the pantry outside the window. So the whole thing was done, obviously, before there were people like you guys to make approvals for such things. And we're trying really hard to restore the house back to its previous grandeur. The house sat on the market for two years before I purchased it. My realtor and everyone else I spoke to was pretty convinced that it was the size of this sinking, very relatively small galley kitchen in what is otherwise a pretty amazing house. That was the reason why it wasn't selling. I fell in love with it and had to have it anyway. But the, this is, this is definitely an attempt on my part. I'm a, I'm a history professor at the university and this is an attempt to, to save something so that it can last for the next 100 years. So, are there any questions? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought my contractor in case you have any logistical questions too.
I don't have any questions. Somebody has any questions? And so this has to go before we say, okay, then it goes to the historical, they'll make the decision about if it fits the aesthetics?
The architecture.
Okay, all right. All right, so we'll start, no, is anybody here in a, for or against this petition? All right, we'll start with board comments. Mr. Eatman?
Man, I'm going to be for it. I, I think I can definitely see the hardship in, in, you know, restoring an older home, especially when there are foundation issues. I think you got no choice but to build better, so.
I agree with my other board members, I'm in favor.
I do see the hardship with the kitchen sinking and having to try to deal with that and the deterioration of the deck and wanting to restore the home to its glory. So I'm in favor of that. I do see the hardship.
I'm in agreeance as well. The deck has fallen in and house needs some updating and I'm in, I'm in agreeance with the fellow board members.
I'm in agreeance as well. I think this is a prime example for an exception where we're bettering a structure that I think is beneficial to this area of our town.
Okay, I, I agree. So at this time, I guess we'll close board comments and then we will have a motion for Margaret Peacock's petition for a variance from the residential district regulations to construct an addition on the property located at 1905 8th Street, Zone R3H, Council District 4, with the approval of the historical district. Voting with Mr. Eatman?
Yes.
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 Motion approved. I like it. I don't know why, I feel like, next petition.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case. ZBA 2523, Jeffrey Biddinger, petitions for a special exception to allow for a wholesale store dealing with a limited or specialized clientele on the property located at 251 Rice Mine Road Northeast, Zone B, in Council District 3. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view. This is a building, the very back of this property, Jackieville Trades is at the front. So here is that building. I'll go in to kind of see where the parking is going to be. The applicable regulation, Section 2491, Special Exception 43, wholesale store dealing with a limited or specialized clientele. Fisher is requesting a special exception to operate a store that sells flowers, outdoor furniture, pottery and gardening goods. Hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, noon to 5:00 p.m. Fisher states that there will be 20 parking, 22, 30 parking spaces, excuse me, for available customers. This is the place that he marked on the site plan of exactly where that parking is going to be, the 20 to 30 parking spaces. Do you have any questions for staff?
So we talked about this, I was wondering about the storage because he's going to have, so what did we determine about storage?
So essentially with this, in the BN zoning district, outside storage is not permitted by right. But with this special exception, it would allow for outdoor storage.
So is that what he's asking us for, the right to be able to have the outside storage?
For the, the wholesale and specialized clientele. And that kind of ties in with that as well.
Any other questions for city? Okay, all right. Mr. Brit. Biddinger. I guess it's, might be Biden.
Jeffrey Biddinger, 6135 Strewsbury Lane, Tuscaloosa, 35406. I would like to open up a boutique garden shop at the back of the property. And we'll need outdoor storage.
Have you been in this business or is this a new?
I have.
Any questions?
I guess, will there be any kind of fence? Would it be fenced in storage?
Yes, that, that triangle will be fenced in.
Be fenced in.
Are you just, just this triangle area is the only area you're going to be operating?
No, that, the, the triangle will be the outdoor area. The building will be indoor.
So you'll be using the whole southern part of this property?
Yes.
Any other questions?
You're storing landscaping items? What are you?
No, it will, it'll be a retail garden center. So it'll be, you know, trees, shrubs, annuals, plants.
Okay.
Pottery, garden furniture.
I guess what's throwing me off is the wholesale. If he's going to be doing retail, what?
So the wholesale with a specialized clientele is kind of a catch-all for our special exceptions. Really, with this petition, it's more so on that specialized clientele side of it.
So it's going to be kind of more specific, like wholesale? Larger landscapers would be mostly your clientele or?
So.
It has nothing to do.
The, the wholesale portion of that is wholesale or specialized clientele. So it doesn't have to be wholesale. It can be specialized clientele specifically.
Okay, that's the part of the specialized.
Retail, correct? You're, this is retail, so?
Yes. I was told that retail does not include outdoor.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense because that kept throwing me, I kept seeing wholesale thinking, okay, it's the limited client, specialized clientele part that we are looking at. Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, board comments. Mr. Eatman?
So Emily, we're just approving the outside, that's, that's, that's all we're voting on, for him to be able to have outside storage.
So essentially with this, it, it is the approval for the specialized retailing. Because of the outside storage portion of it, yes, that is part of the approval, but it's really the specialized retailing portion of it as well.
How, I'm, I'm not understanding how it's specialized since it's, he's doing, go back to, go back to it because when I was reading this and looking at it and now that he's saying.
So essentially with this, the zoning officer determined that it needed to be this specialized or limited clientele based on what it's going to be.
So for him to open up, this is what he needs to have to be able to be compliant and do what he wants to do? This is the one that fit him?
Right.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Mr. Eatman, does that make? Was anybody for or against this? Yes, sir, come for. So we need your name and your address, please come up.
Sonny, Sonny Skinner, I'm the owner of the property.
And give us your address, please.
Excuse me?
Your address?
15372 Hugh Russell Drive, Northport, 35475.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that when we purchased the property, it was Barton's Nursery, all right? Outdoor plant, I mean, it's the same thing. So I really, the variance is kind of confusing between what's what. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else for or against? All right, we'll go to board comment.
I don't see any problem with it, I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor as well.
I do, now that it's been explained to us, I am in favor as well.
I'm in favor as well.
No issues.
Okay, so I'll make the motion. Jeffrey Biddinger, petitions for a special exception to allow for a wholesale store dealing with a limited or specialized clientele on the property located at 251 Rice Mine Road Northeast, Zone BN, Council District 3. Voting with Mr. Eatman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion is approved.
Okay, we'll move on to our next case. ZBA 2623, John Johnson, petitions for a variance from the landscape buffer regulations, a variance from the industrial district setback regulations as well as a special exception for the off-street parking regulations to construct warehouses on the property located at 2602 30th Street, Zone MG, Council District 2. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning. Then a closer aerial view of this property. Couple of street views. And then this is directly across the street from this. These are the existing dome warehouses and this is what this proposal is going to mimic, except there will be three. Applicable Regulation Section 2474, yard and height requirements for industrial districts. The minimum front yard depth must be 20 feet in the MG zoning district. For the off-street parking requirement, it does require eight tenths per employee on the maximum shift, plus one for each company vehicle stored overnight. Landscaping requirements, it does require a buffer between industrial and residential uses to be 50 feet. Fisher is requesting a variance from the landscape buffer requirements and the industrial district setback regulations to construct three dome warehouses. As I mentioned, the regulations require a 50-foot landscape buffer between residents directly to the west of the property. However, this lot is only 53 feet wide. So enforcing this requirement would make the lot unbuildable. Fisher is also requesting to reduce the required 20-foot front setback along South Side Drive to seven feet. These two variances would allow for a suitable building area for the construction of these dome warehouses, which are approximately 30 feet in diameter. In addition, due to the area, the small area that is available to build these warehouses, the parking cannot be fully built on the parcel of land. So the petitioner is proposing to build approximately six parking spaces. However, they will be considered on-street because they can't be completely put on the parcel. So an exception is going to be from the total parking requirement. So here is that site plan. So you can see in this, it only reflects that 20-foot MBL that would be required, that minimum build line. But in reality, this landscape buffer should really be 50 feet. So you wouldn't be able to build anything on this lot. These are those proposed parking spaces that they were discussing. Do you have any questions for staff?
How many are required?
So technically in this, because Mr. Johnson is the only employee from our understanding, really would only be required maybe one parking space. There are a significant amount of parking spaces right across the street that he did build, that he did build for those two dome warehouses there. So technically, he really wouldn't need much parking at all.
So can we say that he used a parking? Just like, say if he sells that piece of property and it's no longer his? Can we have anything, can we say that we approve this with him using the parking across the street? Because if it changes in ownership with that?
Yeah, so essentially with this, it is an exception from the total parking requirement.
Okay.
So if Mr. Johnson was open to it and didn't want to have to build these parking spaces, he, he didn't have to.
Okay, so we'll give him an exception to the parking so he wouldn't have to do that.
Right.
Emily, you said the property across the street mimics this one. What's the buffer on the property across the street, is it?
So this entire, oops, excuse me, this entire area is MG. This entire area is industrial. The only reason that this buffer is here for this one is just because there happens to be two houses behind it that are industrially zoned. But because it specifies in that ordinance, use or zoning, that's where it catches them on this.
So the houses are zoned industrial?
They are.
Okay.
Any other questions for the city?
Any opposition?
Didn't receive any opposition.
Uh-oh, somebody's raised, okay. Wait, not yet, we got to have the person speak first. All right.
Do you have any additional questions for staff?
No questions for staff. All right. All right, is the petitioner, Mr. Johnson, here?
I'm John Johnson, I own the property across the street. If you can flip back to that picture.
If you'll give us your current address, please, if you don't mind.
One-three-two-eight-eight Domes Ridge Road, I live in Duncanville.
Okay.
That building right there is a FEMA three-sixty-one G tornado shelter. I built that as my shop, but I also opened it up to the community to go in there during bad weather. The three that I'm proposing across the street are also rated for two-hundred-and-fifty mile an hour wind speed, so I'm going to be building something a little stronger than normal. And again, just protecting who's in it. I really don't have much else to add.
Okay, any question?
I do say that I like the parking deck as shown, might have an extra space or two in it. I'd like to keep as much green area on the property as possible if I could do without one of those parking spaces, because I don't anticipate this being for anything more than an insurance agent or a spice salesman or a coffee salesman that needs some light warehouse capability, that's the objective.
Let me interject, I too would like to see the number of parking minimized.
Okay, so the proposed park, go back to the proposed parking that he has. So would we like to take it down to?
I'd like to take that one off the right side. You'll notice that wide section where the two domes kind of come together, that's a common loading area. And I think that would eliminate one parking space by using it that way, which is why I requested for my engineer to draw it that way. I'm thinking that parking space on the right could go away.
Which one are we talking about?
If you agree.
So one thing I don't see on this diagram is the depth of the stalls. Do they meet the minimum requirement for a standard parking stall of twenty feet?
Those are drawn to standard spec. As I understand.
Okay, some are longer, visually it looks like to me some of them are longer than others.
The one in between the two buildings to the right is a slope loading area, there'll be a loading door on either side of those angles facing each other. So I made that a little wide and a little longer, and I was going to slope that through a little pad across the front for the ADA.
My only concern is that a car or a vehicle that parks there, the stall depth is twenty feet, so that it doesn't stick out in the street.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. We'll make sure of that.
So do we need to put that in the motion that, or anything like that, or?
No, I think that that's something that, this will have to come to the office of the zoning engineer for an LDP, so I can capture it at that point. I just would prefer to have as few a parking spaces as he needs. If the requirement is only to have one, but he says he needs three or four, then, you know, we're showing, what, eight? So I'd like to minimize the amount of vehicles parking along the streets.
I'd love to minimize the parking spaces.
How many parking do you need?
I'm sorry?
How many parking spaces do you need?
I think one per unit would be all.
Three?
So do you have to have parking spaces at all?
It's just convenience for the owner of the, whoever rents it.
Just for them not having to walk across the street? So we could do three? That's what you're saying, three would be?
I'd be happy with three.
So do we need to put that in the motion, three, if we approve or?
I don't think so, just because it's an exception from the parking in total.
Okay, got you. All right, Mr. Johnson, any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for listening.
Now, do we have anybody for or against that'd like to speak? You can come up now.
Hello.
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for having us. My name is Renita Abernathy, and this is my brother Jeff Payne, Jr. He lives at twenty-six oh-four thirtieth street, I live at twenty-five nineteen Sixth Court, Tuscaloosa. We are the owners of twenty-six oh-four thirtieth street. The house that sits behind where Mr. Johnson proposes to build the three warehouses, we have a little bit concerned with that because the buildings that sit up across from where he is proposing to build these, they're pretty big. His house sits, that house that he lives in, our house, has been in our family for over eighty years. We remember when that whole neighborhood was all residential. There's two houses there now, our house and the house that sits next door. And to build a warehouse there, or warehouses where people are coming in and out, all types of people, because we don't know with warehouses, what type things will be stored there. Also, the line behind there runs right on our property. It would be coming backing up to our property. So you're going to disregard the regulation of the setbacks and stuff like that as far as how far these buildings can go back, or how far the tree line has to be, or the breadth. He lives there. So this is blocking the light, depending on how big they are, it's blocking light. People can come in to do different things, and we don't know who's coming in. It's just, it's just a really bad, like I said, the place is really not a place to be built on. I hate that he has built, purchased this property, but to put warehouses there? If another house was going to be there or something like that, or even a smaller building or something? But those big, have y'all seen those buildings before in the person? In real time, those are some big buildings, and he lives right behind them.
Good afternoon, councilmen. I would like to say that a building, I had him, Mr. John, have talked to me about the proposal putting these buildings up well before this come up to now. And where my house sits, it's a ditch that goes down between the property and land. My house is low elevation, the property and land to that property that he talked about building on is up high. And at the same time, he was talking about actually building, putting trees down in the middle of the ditch. But these trees going to grow, these seeders not going to stay a little bit of seeders, they're going to get bigger and bigger. I don't want my house to be riding the top of my house. I don't want these trees next to my house and got a blind spot on my house. And that's what it would be. And I don't, I don't go with the proposal. But, you know, I had to express myself because that's where I live, and it's going to make a dark spot, a blind spot on my house where we have different people running, you know, coming through the neighborhood, riding, driving, walking, you know.
And right now, it's pretty quiet.
It's pretty quiet, it's a quiet neighborhood, you know, it's a real quiet neighborhood. But to know that we're going to want to put some warehouse right beside my house?
And what kind of storage?
What is going to be stored in these warehouses? Who is going to run this place? He's going to rent it out to someone, but who going to be renting this place out? What are they going to be putting in there? You know, that's the main important thing that worries me. You know, it's not that, I have a concern because I don't just think that that would be right. To build something next to my house, warehouses next to anybody's house? Who would want warehouse next to anybody's house? I don't think Mr. John would want a warehouse in his own house. He would want a warehouse next to his own house. Now why would he want to come in the neighborhood? Before he asked you, own that property, he had bought some property down below us. And he said that he had swapped it out with Mr. Payne, what the property, what he talking about now. Said they swapped it out. All right, back here about a month ago, he had a surveiller came out in the neighborhood, I don't know who he was. The surveiller had a gun on him, and they were walking through the neighborhood with the machine, and they were surveilling my property, and didn't even get okay about it, they just were doing it. I didn't give them a mission to do that.
But the thing is, is that in doing this, it was never anything said to us, and I guess I understand because that is his property, he can propose to do, but I just sat back there and I got the hardness feeling, this is probably like my second time because of owning properties here in Tuscaloosa and coming before this board, is that the decision has already been made about what's going to be done. But we pay taxes here too. I work here in the city, I'm a caregiver, I'm a nurse at the Tuscaloosa VA. I work, he has worked at the University of Alabama, retired from there. And we want, we came here to be heard, and we came here to be our opinion and our thoughts, especially about where he lives, to be taken and considered. And that I think that this needs to be put more thought into before it's a decision made on it already. Because sitting back there, it's like, okay, well, what are we going to do, what do we need to do to make this a done deal? And if he need one parking space or two parking spaces? This is where he lives, this is a property that has been in our family for over eighty years. Our grandmother, our great-grandmother grew up in this house, her mother grew up in this house. We remember when they showed us pictures of this house, when it was a one-room straight-through house that didn't even have an indoor bathroom facility. So we're proud of this place, we're proud of this, this is our heritage. This is where it began for us.
And we're proud of the area which we live in.
That's right.
That it sits in, you know. And the most important thing about it that, you know, we have a special, it's a special area to us. And just to know that you want to put warehouses next to where you live.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your comments, really thank you so much. Can you go back to the zoning map for us, please? Anybody else like to speak for or against? Go back to the other map that shows the pictures of. So these are the only two houses in this area?
That's correct.
They mentioned that they weren't notified, that they're, I mean, were we required to notify them of?
We are, with this, we've sent a fifty-foot? Is it fifty-foot buffer? But we did send notice, it's to the adjacent property owners.
Do we know how long the property has been zoned industrial, or was it rezoned industrial?
So this has been zoned industrial since it was originally put in place in nineteen-seventy-two.
Since nineteen-seventeen? So back over to the corner, the red top and the, what are those two buildings back there?
Do we know what?
So those two houses are actually outside city limits. There, it's a little thing that kind of cuts around them, so they're considered PJ, so they're outside city limits.
Okay, so they're, okay.
Do we know what the buffer would be between these warehouses and this house? Is there a required buffer amount of space that's between?
There is the required buffer, it's a fifty-foot buffer for industrial uses adjacent to residential uses.
But that's what we're voting on, right?
Right, that's part, that's one of the variances.
But what's the buffer going to be that he, when he puts that tree line, how, it'll be just a seven-foot buffer?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay, so he's going to do a ten-foot buffer. So he can put anything he wants on this property if he were trying to do the, but the setback would apply to anything he tries to do on the property?
Any industrial uses. And even in this situation, he couldn't put a residential use there, that would not be a conforming use. So basically, he can't build anything here.
Any more comments from the, okay, so we'll start with board comments? Is there some new information you're going to share with us? Okay, you have two minutes.
On the property that's adjacent to where he's, well, where he's wanting to build, there's never been anything on that property.
Thank you. Board comments, Mr. Eitman?
Man, I think one of the purposes of the zoning board, and one of the, you know, one of the requirements for an exception or a variance is, you know, basically, it creates a hardship and there's nothing else he can do with the property. You know, with it being zoned industrial, there's something industrial that's going to go there eventually, I mean, whether it be warehouse or something else. So, I mean, I know, like I said, it's a tough situation, there will be a ten-foot buffer. I mean, with, and that's all I got. This is a difficult decision. On one hand, I look at it as everything that we see is zoned as industrial, which would be fine in any other case. But again, there's a but or however, if there's a property that's being used as residential, then that's when the buffer kicks in of fifty feet, correct? But the lot is only fifty-three feet. I just find that where I sit right now, I just find it difficult to be in favor of it. If it was just everything around it was industrial with no residential, I would be fine with it. But that is, it's in black and white. Unless something that's being used as a residence has to be fifty feet, and to go from fifty feet to ten feet, that's a little bit too close for my comfort. I don't know what else to possibly go there on a fifty-three foot lot. But it's going to be a difficult decision for me to be in favor of.
I think we're having to do a lot to make this work in terms of giving a special exception, a variance, and a parking. The idea of having the construction, I'm a favorite people being able to use their property and do what they like to do on it. Fifty to ten is a lot. You know, I don't know if they can be made a little smaller, maybe only put one, you know, one or two on there, just do two instead of three. If that would help in some way, it just seems like we're having to do a lot. But I do agree that it is industrial, so then, you know, this is what around it is what it's supposed to be, this type of warehouse and so forth around it. So this is a tough one to make a decision on. I see both sides of it, and it's just, you know, and I do like the fact that there's storm shelters. I think that's something that can be used in the area, we need more of that, so that's something to be thought of. This is a tough one right here.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance, it is a tough decision, being that residents have been there as long as they have, but it is on industrial, and there's really not much else he can do with it, with the current setbacks with the residential. So it's a pretty tough decision, but. So uh, it's a pretty tough decision, but same time as providing him a hardship with his property. So I'm in favor of it, but I would like if he would maybe could look at doing something a little, there may be only doing two of them instead of three.
I agree, I think that makes sense. There's two across the street with it, with it being an industrial. Um, obviously, another house isn't gonna go there and storage and something of this nature is probably the most quiet building that you're going to see built there. So, um, but that's kinda my thoughts on.
My question is to the city on that. If we're um wanting him to come back with maybe something, a little different configuration or something, how do we say that or how do we do that? If, if the board was?
Can we table it?
Can we table it and he come back with something different?
Absolutely. The board can absolutely vote. You'd have to vote to continue it to next month.
If he came back with something a little different, it may provide more green space as well.
Mr. Johnson, um, if you, can he come back up? Mr. Johnson, if you'll come back up. In looking at this, um, in light of the plea of your neighbors and then you got two across the street, is there another configuration? Maybe we can give a little more green space. You may not be able to do fifty, but you might, if you do two, could, and then not needing all the parking spaces? Is there something else that could be, if we gave you till next month to look at it and see what?
Well, uh, one of the things that I, that nobody really touched on was the configuration of the trees. I was planning on using those tall evergreen, not real tall, but you know what I mean? They're like cylindrical and, and put them through there. If he didn't want them real high, that's fine, we cut them down. As far as reorienting them, I can probably twist them a little bit and make those back lines square off to that back line a little bit. Talking to the engineer, we've got a minimum twenty-feet parking spaces there. So, and this is one of the people that's been using that tornado shelter whenever the weather gets bad too. And he parks in that left parking space for the last two years. So I was really taken aback by his resistance. I've tried to be a good neighbor and I intend to be a good neighbor, not lease it out to low lights, something can spice salesman, computer parts salesman, somebody that doesn't need a lot, but he needs a little, a little cargo door. That was my original plan. So to say it's gonna be a school like they've got next door with all the gymnastics going on and all their parking, no. It's not gonna be anything like that. It's just gonna be a quiet little, I use the word warehouse, but office warehouse may be a better nomenclature on the thing. And that's really all I can add. I could probably twist them a little bit, but if I reduce the size much, then we're getting to.
Does it have to be three? Can it be two? Just questions, just, I'm not trying to dictate or anything like that.
Well, to make them, to make what I hope to rent them for, which is reasonable, I'd, you know, the three would give me a better. But again, it's about using all the buildable space that I can. And I don't wanna push the envelope too much, but at the same time.
The biggest issue I think we have is the setback is supposed to be fifty and you're at ten. So it seems like a big, and so I think.
Yeah, well, the lot's only fifty-three, so, and that's exactly the same size as the other lot that was back in the corner that I own, that he was talking about. They were identical sizes, so I didn't trade from one up or one down or anything like that. They were exactly the same sized lots.
Is the other lot on the screen where we can see or?
Are there any homes?
Near that?
There's nothing. Near that other lot? There's nothing near the other lot?
Nothing there. Now, you can see the, the other lot, you can see Thirty First Street running uh left to right, the left edge, southern, next to those little red tint-top buildings. Did you see that, that lower lot there is the other one that I traded, that one right there? Yeah, that's the one I traded for. They're the exact same size.
Oh, so it'd have been across the street then?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And you didn't like that, that space to put it on?
Well, actually, Stan talked me out of it. He wanted, he wanted all four of those on one side and he said, hey, I'll trade you this other one directly across the street, so we did.
Gotcha. So that means something's coming.
He's not a friend of mine, he just, you know. I don't think he owns them all four yet though, so you may have, you may have a little reprieve.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson?
If there's any way to push him to give you a setback a little bit more and move your parking space, your three parking space off Thirty First Street?
Oh, I'd be happy to do it that way. Yeah, put a sidewalk down the front, be happy to do that.
So I will make the note that if he pushes it up any closer than five feet to that lot line, he's gonna have to fire rate those walls that are along that.
Yeah, the way it's set up now, I could take that, that access to the cargo doors and then just turn that, that access for the handicap right down in front of the building.
We won't confirm that with building to make sure that he would actually have to fire rate it.
So that still wouldn't get one, but maybe twenty? Twenty setback? Okay, so um we wanna vote or do we wanna, what's the board, do y'all wanna vote tonight or what do you wanna?
I'll go back and sit down.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't sound like he's needing three to maximize the real estate there. I mean, you can't do a whole lot more with the property, I understand their concern and.
Okay.
I, I would feel more comfortable looking at it both ways. If, if it's continued or brought back next month, we'll possibly just the two. I understand three will maximize its profit, but if it's just the two, just looking at it as, as it is on the screen, if this is the house.
Oh, yeah, and they're back and then.
The setback's the same, but you don't have that.
Right, but, okay. So, in the present condition, I would think. Okay, so what do we do about that? So right now, we're looking at the way, in this present condition, we wouldn't wanna approve it. We feel like if he took the, the one that's up by the house off, then that would be something we would be interested in approving. Do you wanna continuance to do, look at that or do you want us to vote on it tonight, Mr. Johnson? I mean, so. Are you willing to do that, Mr. Johnson? You understand what we're saying? So for the board, what we're looking at is that if this front one was taken off that's up there by the house and those two were in the back where they are, we would be comfortable approving something like that. That way, you get to utilize your property, all of that going on. In the current state, I don't feel like it's going to pass if we vote on it tonight, so.
Feel like changing it to two buildings instead of three?
Right, two buildings and that way, there's not anything up by that house. And then you can have, everything stays the same and then that would be, you know, you might even make it a little bit bigger, those two a little bit bigger or something like that.
Well, that's kinda what I really didn't wanna do, was make them dissimilar. Uh, I can't twist them to make them meet that property line a little bit better and give me a bit better uh opening for my, on the two on the right. Uh, he currently parks on the parking space on the one on the left, so I'll just have to think about that. I really don't wanna push it, but at the same time, two of them doesn't do what I need it to do.
So do you want us to give you a continuance to kinda go look at it and bring something back for next month?
I'd like to, I'd like to get started. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna bow to pressure and, and rethink this and maybe put another proposal out.
Can we do that?
If, if that's what you prefer, I do.
So it would be, it's completely up to you. Um, I think what the board is saying is they can either vote on it tonight as it's presented or they can allow you to continue it and go back to the drawing board, see if you can come up with something a little bit um more conducive to their concerns.
What you're saying, it's not feasible and we obviously don't wanna vote for it.
Correct.
Right. We like to think you have a choice, a yea or nay. We want you to have a choice, we don't wanna.
I mean, I'm not trying to be a Mark Booth either. I've known him a lot of years.
Sure.
I just, I just would like to make it, you know, I'd like, the thing about it is, is that low profile, they're not these gigantic three-story buildings like much lower because they're only thirty feet in diameter, which means they're proportionately lower to the ground, blocking daylight is not a, not a matter, not a, not a thing.
Are the roof lines the same from the house to your, top of your, top of your roof line and top of the house roof line, are they the same?
Uh, no, they'll be, they'll be lower than the two across the street. Those are forty-four.
No, that's resident.
Oh, no, they would, they would be lower than his, his roof line for sure.
So they're below his roof line?
Yeah, absolutely. And he's down in a hole too. As a matter of fact, that line of trees that I'm showing right there is just about the limit of the severe drop-off on the property. So I'll be coming back to the drop-off and then stop it. Like I said, I can twist them around a little bit to make them line up better.
So what do y'all wanna, y'all wanna vote tonight or are you in favor or?
My whole thing is, it's all industrial, I mean, unfortunately, that's what it is.
If you'll have a seat right up there, Mr. Johnson, in the front, so if we have any other que, if we have any more questions. So for the, for the city, you know, are we within our purview to make this request or to move in this direction? Because we're looking at it as, we understand both sides and feel like a compromise would be two on the property. And with everything that's the way it's laid out, um, if he's willing to continue it and bring that back, you know.
From our perspective as the city, having a more specific site plan that's being approved by the zoning board of adjustment that we as the city can use to ensure that this is aligning with the ZBA's approval, I think a continuance would be appropriate to allow for that.
Okay. Are y'all in agreement with that? Is that okay, Mr. Johnson? The continuance? Okay. So, we make a motion that Mr. John, John Johnson's petition for a variance from the landscape buffer regulations, a variance from the industrial district setback regulations and a special exception from the off-street parking regulations to construct, do we need? Um, warehouse on the property located at twenty-six oh-two Thirty First Street, Zone MG, be continued until next month. All in favor? Or do we need to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so it's continued till next month?
Okay, so we'll move on to our next case, ZBA twenty-seven twenty-three. Huey Brandon petitions for a special exception to allow for vehicle sales and a special exception to allow for a wholesale store serving a limited or specialized clientele on the property located at two forty-six Scallon Boulevard, Zone B N, Council District Seven. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning and then a closer aerial view. So this was formerly uh Lanier Automotives, that was the most recent. This is the office as it sits today. If you can kinda see, the reason I wanted to highlight this property, um, we'll talk about it in a second, but there is an existing fence here. The applicable regulation, section twenty-four ninety-one, uh, motor vehicle sales agency. So any outdoor storage of automobiles does require that six-foot fence, so that is already there. Um, in addition, the wholesale store serving a limited or specialized clientele. So the petitioner is requesting for a special exception, sell used vehicles and manufactured sheds. The owner has operated a successful business directly across Scallon Boulevard for years, but due to the impending termination of that lease, uh, they are wanting to move these operations right across Scallon Boulevard. Uh, this property was previously approved for a special exception three separate times under three separate ownerships to allow for automobile sales. So again, that's why that fence is already there. So here is a current site plan um of what it looks like now with that existing building. Do you have any questions for staff?
It's always been a car lot, right?
Yes.
No other questions, any questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hayes. All right, Huey Brandon?
Uh, members of the board, I'm Chris Centel, Centel Engineering, six thirty-nine Black Bears Way. Uh, I'm here representing the Brannons. Uh, like I said, I have operated for years on Scallon Boulevard, this is a great location for them. It's provided for them to be a successful business. Uh, but like I said, they don't own the property across the road, their rent is, or their renter is terminating, they want them to move. They have the opportunity to move across the street, which has also been a successful car dealership. And they also sell, uh, it's considered pre-manufactured storage buildings in that case. They are not proposing to use the zone, this R two. But if you do remember, years ago, this used to be Shelton State Community College and that was their parking lot, the rear of this property. So it still reflects that, but there is fence, there's buffer, there's a good vegetated bu, uh, buffer between the rear of this property and the front.
Any other comments for us?
Yeah, I'd answer any questions if you had them.
Any questions?
So, as the property stands right now, you're just working out of one building? So you'll do the car, automobile sales and the manufacturing home sales out of one building? Or you have?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. So the, the property that runs behind the building to the neighborhood?
There's, we're not using that part. There's a ditch that separates it.
Yeah, this is uncrossable.
Which, it's not in, you know, it's not zoned on that side over there, so we're only using.
Yeah, the front portion. And there are no plans at the current moment for, to do anything with the residential side?
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience of for or against this petition? Okay, we'll move to board comments.
I don't have any problem with the move. I mean, they're already across the street, it's been a car dealership, so I think it's a good usage of the property.
I'm in favor as well.
I am in agreement. Um, it was already a car lot, I don't see any reason why we need to, um, you know, what you're gonna be doing was already across the street, so I don't see any opposing or anything different that needs to happen with it, and I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I would agree with the fellow board members.
I'm in favor.
Okay, we'll read the motion. Huey Brandon petitions for a special exception to allow for vehicle sales and special exception to allow for wholesale store serving a limited or specialized clientele on the property located at two forty-six Scallon Boulevard, Zone B N. Voting with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved. Y'all need a break or anything? I'm good, I'm good, we roll on through.
Okay, so we'll move on to our next case, ZBA twenty-eight twenty-three. Leah Alexander petitions for a variance from the mixed residential district regulations regarding building height for accessory structures on the properties located at four nineteen and four twenty-one Thirty First Avenue East, Zone RD two, Council District Five. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning and then a closer aerial view. This is right across from the elements, it's in Alberta. They look familiar because a few months ago, um, we did see where this was coming through for a variance for all of these lots, uh, for a different variance. After some discussion, they've decided to move forward with a different application. So this is where those lots are and then that drawn view. The applicable regulation, section twenty-four three thirty-five, for building heights, it does say that no accessory structure may exceed the height of the tallest principal structure on site. Petitioner is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a detached dwelling that will exceed the height of the principal structure. Accessory dwelling units are permitted in the R two zoning district with a size limitation of four hundred and fifty square feet. For the petitioner, this is not functional for a dwelling. Principal structure will be a single-story home while the accessory structure will be two stories. But the petitioner did state it's not going to exceed the maximum allowable height of these structures in the zoning district. The accessory structure will contain a garage utility space on the first floor with a dwelling on the second floor. Uh, this will also allow for a more functional living quarters. So this is just a proposed site plan, um, the layout of exactly what these dwellings are gonna look like. And then this is the first and second floor plans for these structures. As well as some proposed elevations. Do you have any questions for staff?
So engineering is okay with this plan that he has now, he doesn't have to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the petitioner. Okay, so the petitioner, Mr. Leah, Alex- oh, miss?
Good evening, everyone, Leah Alexander, um, with Alexander Architecture, fifty-five twenty, tenth forty east, Northport, Alabama. So, um, we have worked to improve the plan and minimize the footprint for the accessory structure, uh, on this project. Staff had some concerns, uh, with the previous plan that we had brought forward. So what we've done is we've worked with staff to try to improve and make this project better. And so that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight.
Any questions? Any questions? All right, pretty nice drawing, thank you. No questions? No. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone against or for this property? Okay, we'll go with board comments, Ms. Eaton?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to say thank you all for working with city staff on that. I know it was a little controversial at, at first, but I think that's a good representation of what, what community looks like. We work together and we come to a compromise and we get it done. So I, I want to thank you for working with city staff to come up with a plan that fits the property.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Eaton as well. I appreciate you all discussing this with the city and coming to a compromise, and I'm in favor.
I agree as well, this is what the board is about. We don't, you know, we want to see the growth of the city, we want to see the bele- betterment of the city. We're not here just to say no and turn things down, we want to be able to say yes and be able to provide solutions. And so I'm really excited about this and that it was able to be worked out to the city satisfaction and to your satisfaction.
I would agree, and I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Okay, so the motion. Leah Alexander positions for a variance from the mixed residential district regulations regarding building height for accessory structures on the properties located at four nineteen and four twenty-one thirtieth avenue east, zone RD two, council district five. Voting with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, now we're moving into our short-term rentals. Uh, ZBA twenty-nine twenty-three. Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at twelve Autobahn Place, zone R three H, council district four. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning and then a closer aerial view. Some nearby short-term rentals, there's a pretty good bit. There's the front of the property and then that driveway. Applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, the house is four bedrooms and two bathrooms, no violations or complaints. The request is for four vehicles and eight adults. If approved, staff recommends two vehicles and four adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
So I'm assuming that driveway and no bike, no parking around the back?
So the petitioner states that there is a parking pad in the rear, and I'll let her touch on that.
Okay.
You want the aerial view? All right, Ms. Roberts, come on down.
Hello, Kim Roberts of Bama B and B Rentals. Um, I would like to make a correction on here because I had not seen the house when I put this in for the owners, and when I went over there, uh, it does expand into the backyard, that long driveway goes into the back and they have a parking pad back there. But we would not put more than two cars in the back and then two on the driveway. So I just felt like it was too tight, uh, back there to, for guests that are not familiar, to park back there, other, more than two cars. So that gate opens up and you can pull back into the, they have a gravel parking area back there in the back.
Let me remind the board that parking has to be on paved surfaces, gravel's not acceptable.
But I thought in the historic district that we deliberately use gravel. I mean, I know that's what we do at our bed and breakfast, we have a big parking area and, and we were made to do it in gravel, you know, so that it perks and.
I don't think that applies to short-term rentals. Y'all might double check me, but I don't think so.
I think really where this kicks in is historically, the board has approved based on the driveway width, not where you can go and pull some cars, because you don't want any cars that are having to back out to allow for another car to go in.
The tandem parking and then somebody has to back out, parks on the street, then go back in the driveway. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Roberts?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here for or against this petition? Okay, we'll move to board comments.
Uh, I'm comfortable with this one with all the short-term rentals, uh, that, that's in the vicinity of this one. Uh, so I'm comfortable with two vehicles, uh, and four adults.
I agree as well, I'm, um, I'm comfortable with the two vehicles, four adults.
Okay. I agree as well, this is a pretty straightforward short-term rental. Um, the only issue would be the parking and we've just explained that the tandem parking and going around the back. Um, so I'm in agreement with four adults, two vehicles.
Yes, I am as well, the amount of short-term rentals in this area, uh, I think this one's, I'm in favor of four and two.
I agree also, just with all the comments and reducing the vehicles to two.
Okay. So I'll read the motion. Bama B and B, Kim Roberts petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at twelve Autobahn Place, zone R three H, council district four, uh, with the stipulation of four adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one year. Uh, other condition, accessory structures cannot be occupied by anyone at any time. I don't have to read that anymore, do it, okay. All right, voting starts with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
So we'll move on to our next short-term rentals, ZBA thirty twenty-three. Jerita Williams petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at six oh-three twenty-ninth avenue, zone BGOH, council district one. So here's an aerial view of that property as well as zoning, then a closer aerial view of that property. Just one nearby short-term rental in the same little group, over by Capital Park.
The one that's in the same, is it in the same building?
It is. Yeah. The view of that townhome. And then this is the parking area. Applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, the house is two bedrooms, a two and a half bathrooms, no violations or complaints. So this property was previously approved under separate ownership, um, barely recently actually, it was last fall, um, for four adults and two vehicles. This petitioner is requesting for two vehicles and four adults, and if approved, staff does recommend those two vehicles and four adults. Do you have any questions for staff? I will say with this, um, she also requested for forty-five nights.
This is the first time, right?
First time.
Okay. All right, Jerita Williams?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me, I'm Jerita Williams and I currently live at fifty-two twenty-eight First Court, Tuscaloosa, three five four zero five. Um, and I just wanted to say a little something before questions, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm Jerita, I am here to petition for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district, um, at the, uh, requested location. And I've had many addresses in the world and there is absolutely no place like home. Uh, there is only one place in the entire universe named Tuscaloosa, and I had the privilege, the privilege to be born, raised and to return here, home. My parents own this property and within the next few weeks, my son and I are moving into the home as our primary residence and we only plan to rent it for football season and maybe a few other special occasions connected to the city. Uh, I have over seven years of experience in long-term renting and just last December, I converted my long-term rental property in Northport into a short, short-term rental property. Um, and I have everything already established as shown here in my little welcome book. Um, and I have a digital copy, uh, I sent to guests prior to arrival. I have this welcome book with a little more information included as a hard copy located at the property. Uh, included in the welcome packet are the house rules, uh, which for this property that I'm applying for will be tweaked a little bit. Um, but the basics include no parties or events, uh, quiet hours, emergency numbers, where to go in case of inclement weather, um, et cetera. And there is also a lease agreement. I am the on-call person and the, in the rare occasion where I am unavailable, my parents will be. Uh, so far, I have two public reviews and they are both five-star reviews. One of our guests was gracious enough to say to me, you made my whole opinion of Alabama a great one. That is part of my vision for my short-term rental business, to be about the business of widening the gaze of our guests in our city, about the heart of who we are and the potential of who we can be. Uh, there are two public reviews on the Airbnb profile that I currently, um, have my other property listed, listed on. Um, I could read those reviews, they're pretty awesome, I like to, you know, read them, but I'm sure, you know, seven minutes. Um, uh, if, we can read them later if you like. The second property, this second property is a wonderful way for me to continue to make the opinion of Alabama a great one. Our home where we live is the absolute perfect, or where we will live is the absolute perfect opportunity to showcase all of the good, uh, all of the good our great city offers. Uh, its proximity to the university, Stillman College, the Riverwalk, downtown and the rich heritage of the Civil Rights History Trail is just a few steps or a few blocks out of our front door. If approved, it would be a beautiful space to host guests who may be here for a game or a conference, but also to expand their opinion about the entire city where legends are made, where I was made. I love hosting families in my home, short-term rentals opens a special opportunity for me to do just that and provide hospitality in ways a hotel cannot. My parents are a son and daughter of the Jim and Jane Crow South, and it is a sacred responsibility for me to return home and live on the land that breeds so much of the history of my great city. My parents are living legends. Caring for their property and the legacy they have built in this city humbles me, but I take great pride in caring for them and what they've worked so hard to give to me, my siblings, their grandchildren and this city. If given the chance to host guests in our home as short-term renters, I won't take that responsibility and honor lightly. And as you can see from my reviews, I got the receipts. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today and for having, uh, and for hearing my request.
I guess that's it. You answered all the questions we normally ask. I think you're the first person to come up with a speech for us, so.
Well, I, I didn't have a PowerPoint, so.
No, that was great. That answered all our questions usually asked, have you had experience, do you have rules and regulations, do you have experience? And you've talked about all of that. Any questions from anybody else?
She requested forty-five nights?
The only thing is forty-five nights, usually when your first year, it's, it's only thirty. So that would be the only thing if it's approved. Any other questions? I was like, you might as well read the reviews. That's mine, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Mary? All right, thank you so much, all right? All right, anyone in, um, for or agai- for or against this petition? All right, uh, we'll have board comments, Mr. Eaton?
She, she's got it all together, so she's got experience, so I'm in favor.
I'm in favor as well.
I agree with my fellow board members?
I'm in favor as well.
In favor.
That's one of the best presents. Okay, I'll read the motion. So we're going to have, um, Jerita Williams petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property in a historic district located at six oh-three twenty-ninth avenue, zone BGO dash H, council district one, with a stipulation for adults, two vehicles, thirty nights, one year. Voting with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Hayes? Thank you.
Okay, wrapping it up with ZBA thirty-one twenty-three. Devin Jones petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at four oh-five Hargrove Grove, zone R one, council district one. Here's an aerial view of that property as well as the zoning and then a closer aerial view of that property. Nearby short-term rentals. So I'm just going to go moving down, so this is the front of the house from the street, moving up the driveway and then the rear of the property. Applicable regulations, this is a new short-term rental request, uh, the petitioner did state that it's a five-bedroom, seven-bathroom house. We as city staff, zoning staff, do consider that rear structure and accessory structure, it's not part of the main dwelling because it isn't connected with a conditioned area. Uh, and the previous petition that was approved under a separate, uh, individual stated that it was a four-bedroom, four-bathroom house. It's previously approved for eight adults and four vehicles. So it was said to city staff, um, the TPD was called for a party a couple of weeks ago, um, but other than that, no other violations or complaints were received. Uh, they are requesting for five vehicles and ten adults, but if approved, staff recommends four vehicles and eight adults. Do you have any questions for staff?
Now, it wasn't, was it a short-term rental? They weren't doing a short-term rental, it was just the, the people were having a party?
Exactly, so who it was previously approved under, she moved, um, the management company has been, they haven't been operating for months. So what happened a few weeks ago was not associated with that short-term rental.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any more questions? Any questions for the city?
What, was it associated with the petitioner?
So, it's not associated with the petitioner. Um, I think it very well could be associated with the individual that's living in the home now, um, with the, the owner.
So the owner of the house is not coming for a short-term rental?
It's not, it's, um, the owner is using a management company in the same way that, um, this has been the same owner this entire time. They had a separate management company that came and got approved, that management company left, so now they're going under a separate management company. And they may have more information, um, petitioner themselves, that could probably touch on if they know about this incident and what information they have.
Okay. Any other questions for the city? Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
Thank you.
Uh, Devin Jones?
Devin Jones, my address is, um, one five zero Lenora Drive, I actually live across from the property on the other side as well. I guess I could just start with, um, recently, probably starting in, I think it was January, close to February, uh, they were using a different property management company, we met, we discussed some ideas about a different route to go. Previously, to me coming here, it was, uh, long-term, so there were students that lived in each of the bedrooms and rented it out monthly. Didn't end up liking what was going on, it was just, the place was not being well taken care of, so we decided to go towards the short, short-term rental route and that's where I came in. I know we've talked about, when I was talking to the city, they've talked, we talked about the property adjoining it, because it's, so in the front, you have the four bedrooms and then in the back, there's an extra kind of like in-law suite type of deal, but, um, we would just be renting out the front of the four bedrooms and the four bathrooms and I know we can't have anybody in that back unit since it's an adjoining property even when it's being short-term rented, so I made the owner aware of that as well. As far as the TPD being called for a party a couple of weeks ago, I'm unaware of that one, so I won't be able to.
It, it's probably currently being rented out to someone right now?
No, it is not. It hasn't been rented out to someone, I think, over a year and a half.
But you're not the owner, you're the manager.
Yes.
And nobody lives in the house day-to-day?
Well, his, so his daughter is there. She lives in the, or she's staying in the portion on the back, like that's adjoining the property and she's, so she's a swimmer here at the university and she trains for the Olympics, so she's since left, but she was there for a duration of time.
So I, you'd have rules and regulations that will be posted?
Yes, so, um, I drafted up a contract, I didn't bring it, I guess I should have, but of just everything that we're going through of the check-in, check-out time, uh, absolutely no parties. They even said that to me, kind of harped on it, because they've got very expensive stuff in the house and they don't want any of that to be messed up in the house itself, I mean, it's a beautiful home and, I mean, there's a lot of glass everywhere, like glassware and stuff, so I told them I would make sure of that. And as far as people renting it out, I know I've got my family and my friends and they know people as well and we just kind of looked at the model that would bring the best amount of, or most amount of profit to him as opposed to the long-term rental and, you know, the wear and tear on the house after a while would just be hard to deal with. I've also already hired a cleaning crew and done a bunch of other things to get in place for us.
And you will be the person on call if anything happens?
Yes, I will be the person on call, so Lenora Drive is directly across from four oh-five Hargrove. So Lenora Drive is directly across from 405 Hargrove Road. It would probably be about a five-minute walk, a two-minute drive if anything were to happen. It would be me who would be checking on things. He is out of the state, he lives in Utah, so I'm basically the eyes and ears on the ground here in Tuscaloosa.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the city. So with the short-term rental, I thought we approved it for the property owner, and then the property owner can designate whomever the management company is. So if it was previously approved as an STR with a different management company, we have a new management company, but it's still the same property owner?
Hmm. It's, the approval from the zoning board of adjustment is tied to whoever is petitioning for it. That's where that designation of agent form comes in, of allowing the individual, the management company, to represent them at the ZBA meeting. But it's all tied to whoever's name is on that petition is petitioning for this.
So, would this not be a renew, I mean, since it's already an STR, I mean...
So it's not since who they were approved under no longer is in business with this. She no longer is operating with the short-term rental.
Can I also add something?
Hmm.
So she did apply, or the previous property manager did apply for the short-term rental. It was actually, like, never rented out. So I think they did all the steps and everything up until have the property rented out. It just wasn't, that's why previously I had mentioned that it's just been them living there for the past...
So this never was a short-term rental?
They never pulled the license for it. They only got the ZBA approval to do it. A lot of people get them and don't use them, so that's not unusual. Anybody, anybody else? Any more questions? Do you have any more questions for us?
Not that I can think of. I know you guys said if it's a new STR, I can't do 45, it has to be 30 days.
Has to be 30 days.
Okay.
All right.
I guess that's all I got. And something else to add, I know the driveway, I was listening to a couple of the other cases. You said there's no tandem parking. And if you see the driveway from the aerial view, I don't know if you can pull that back up, but... So you can pull, when you pull in, you can pull up and then park there. I know that would block somebody in, but the circular at the beginning, it's easy for people to park this way and then kind of just pull out and around.
Yeah, parking wasn't an issue. It's, we see it's a lot of parking, so that, yeah, that one.
Never mind.
No, specifically, thank you, no problem. Thank you, Devin. Is there anybody here for or against this property being, this petition? Okay. At this time, we'll have board comments.
I don't have any problem with it.
Yeah, I agree, I'm in favor.
I don't like the number, and so, you know, with it having recently been the TPD and that we're not knowing who, what was the reason for that, I'd like to maybe see six adults, three vehicles, 30 days, just to see for this first year, and then come back and maybe increase it. It's just, it's already had a party, and when you get to eight to 10 people, that sounds like a party house to me. And I think that's the fear that people have of short-term rentals. So that's just my opinion about it.
I don't have an issue with it. It was previously approved, eight-four. I'll go with the staff's recommendation of eight-four.
Yeah, since it was previously approved, I don't have an issue.
Okay. So we'll make the motion. Devin Jones petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 405 Hargrove Road, Zone R1, Council District 2, eight adults, four vehicles, 30 nights, one year, voting with Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. Any other business tonight? And that sounds like we're done. Adjourn.